Thank you for joining our town hall meeting. I like to be respectful of people's time, so we will start restarting right now at 5:30. First, I want to take the time to thank our board of trustees and our staff for all their hard work and dedication to our students and staff. You know, the purpose of this gathering is to provide information pertaining to district challenges, communication, safety, instruction, technology, food distribution, extracurricular and transportation. We will entertain any questions pertaining to this presentation. You have access to a chat box where you can post questions where our team will answer. In addition, at the end of the presentation, you can pose questions again, and at this time, I will be introducing our amazing leaders in our district. First of all, I have our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Torres. I have our executive director of curriculum, Dr. Rodriguez. Our technology director, Ms. Veronica Torres. Our nurse coordinator, Mrs. Alibad. Our child nutrition director, Mrs. Casas. We have our face coordinator, Mrs. Prado. Our athletic director, Coach Oscar Salinas. Our girls coordinator, Ms. Coach Campos, I call her Ms. Coach Campos. And our maintenance and transportation director, Mr. Guerra. You know, La Feria ISD is starting our vision and how education can emerge stronger from this pandemic. You know, this presentation itself will be uploaded in both languages and placed in the district webpage. You know, I just wanted to state that in the past, you know, I've had a superintendent, a coffee with the superintendent. Let's talk about it early in the morning. You know, at this time, our team really felt that it was important to provide two sessions, one in the AM and one in the PM. And especially because our numbers are going up with this COVID. And so we want to make sure that we're as transparent as possible in sharing information to your community. So that is very, very important as a district. Next slide. First of all, I'd like to share with you that, you know, on this list, we have our challenges. And I'm going to be very honest with you. We've had our challenges. Our staff is working diligently to close achievement gaps because gaps started since the spring of last year. You know, one of the major challenges that we are experiencing is our students are not logging on or they're logging on and not partaking in the actual session when our teachers are teaching. And of course, they're not doing, they're not logging on consistently as well as not turning assignments. And these are some of the major challenges that we're facing. You know, as a district, our staff has utilized multiple mediums in trying to collect assignments and getting our students logged on. You know, our teachers are working well into the evenings, checking their email for assignments as well. You know, our role as an educational family is to support our students, our parents and teachers and staff through these unprecedented times. You know, parents, I cannot stress it enough, parents, please. We strongly encourage you and welcome you to contact our teachers, contact our campus administration. You know, they will answer your questions. We're here to help you. You know, our campus staff has been increasing dramatically, all their efforts in contacting parents daily, especially with those students who are not having social, are not having that academic success. You know, and according to our campus administration, some of the non-pastor student parents are not responding with these attempts at the campus level. I've had principals say they've gone to a house like three times in one day and they hear noise, but nobody opens the door. Please, parents, open your door. We want to work with you. We want to help your children. You know, we need you to, we need you to call us. We've been calling you. Answer us. That's the only way that we can continue to have, you know, successes. And we've had successes, of course we have, but we know those are the challenges that we are facing now at these times. In addition to that, just so you'll know, we have sent through mail both progress reports and report cards. And parents, again, we cannot stress the importance of working together and the success of your children. Next slide. Communication. We know communication is key. When you look at all of this in the list, you will see there's a lot that we do as a district, but we know we need more. And so we're always meeting and thinking outside the box. What other ways can we provide that communication tool to speak to our families? And one of the things that I wanted to highlight in this list that we have is the band app. It's similar to like remind that some of the elementary campuses use. And of course, we've added community flyers that we provide before students come in. And so we're very excited about that. Again, we continue to look at different ways in which we can communicate with our families because that is important. We know that. Next slide. I want to take you through to the steps to find all types of information that will be helpful to you as parents. Step one, you go to the district webpage and you will click on, if you go to step two, you will click on the back to school 2020-21 icon. Step three, you will view safety handbooks for the district and campuses as well as other pertinent information. What I also want to share with you, all these handbooks that we have, it's done by staff, by community members. You know, we all partake in creating these handbooks where everybody is inclusive, where we involve voice and different lenses based on experiences, which is very, very important for us as a district. Next slide. I would like to share with you also, here you'll see some pictures of some of the safety measures that our district has put in place in the school. You know, we're very proud of all the efforts that we've made. Here you'll see dividers in bathrooms between scenes. We also have hand sanitizer stations as well as decal for social distancing. Very, very, very important. These are just some. We have others, other components and measures that we've done. Next slide. As part of the prevention practices, you know, we as a district continue to screen all individuals entering our schools. You know, we have in place protocols for returning to work after exhibiting symptoms or having a lab confirmed case of COVID-19. Our campuses and departments continue to disinfect throughout the day before students come to face-to-face instruction. I'm very proud of our nursing staff, head of our Mrs. Alibad, our coordinator. They really truly go above and beyond as well. You know, they, they call these students and they, you know, they had to answer a questionnaire before returning to campus. And we'll be honest with you, as of right now, we don't know, you know, what that percent is going to be. I know before the holidays, we were like about 39% of face-to-face instruction. You know, and I know that parents have that choice and they have the choice to keep their children at home, especially with numbers going up. And so the safety, and we know that safety is very, very important. And so we understand that. But again, kudos to our nursing staff for again, going above and beyond and ensuring that, again, it's all about the safety, right? Next slide. You know, how are we responding? You know, I'm very, very proud of our, again, of our team that we have here, our district that consists of Mrs. Alibad and Mrs. Torres, you know, our campus administration. You know, we have established practices to respond to any COVID-19 cases once it's reported. Once it's reported at a campus or department, they are there, they are there, they're making sure they follow that checklist. We make sure we, we contact the Cameron County Health Department and we ensure that all the areas, all areas, to be quite honest with you, the whole campus is disinfected because we really want our teachers to feel as safe as possible. We know we don't live in this bubble. We know the pandemic is out there. But we have implemented so many measures, you know, and I'll be honest with you. As I was going to campuses this week and of course, following CDC guidelines and having conversations with our teachers was resonated with me with them is that they thanked us, they're thanking us, all of us for all that we do for them, and they understand that we have gone above and beyond in the measures that we've implemented. And just hearing it from them, you know, it just, it just affirms that, you know, though we're not perfect because we still have challenges, you know, our efforts are there. And that's just a lot about all of us here in our community and our school district, our school board has been unbelievable. You know, anything that we had to purchase, they approved because they know, they know the importance of safety. And so they have been unbelievable. Again, I can't thank them enough. You know, again, we also ensure that any cases that we, that are positive, we inform not only that campus when students are there, but we also inform the whole district. And we send letters out to, and send messages out to our parents. We were very, very transparent. In addition to that, every Monday, you know, we post our positive cases as well as any teacher, student or staff member that has had symptoms or we want to quarantine, we send them. And again, we continue going with the 14 days. Whereas CDC has made some adjustments, we continue doing the 14 days because we have been very proud of our numbers thus far. And it doesn't mean it's going to change tomorrow because it can change from day to day. But just know that, and just know, committee members, that, you know, we are working towards doing what's best on a daily basis and making those adjustments. Next slide. You know, and now you think about how do we continue to mitigate our practices, right? For the likelihood of COVID-19 spread inside our schools and in our departments. You know, we ensure and we make sure that our administration and teachers, all staff are continued to monitor that all students are wearing their mask or their face coverings. You know, our staff is required to wear a mask at all times. We continue to disinfect even within the classroom. Teachers have a bag where we have given them resources to clean and they have been so creative, our teachers. You know, especially like the secondary, I can say, they have marked different desks where every period and then they, of course, are still disinfecting, but they have become very creative and ensuring as much as possible the safety of our students. So very, very proud of our, again, I can't say it enough and say enough how proud we are of all of our staff and their efforts. You know, and we continue to disinfect, especially the areas of high traffic or common areas. You're talking about doorknobs, tables, shared supplies, if there's any shared supplies. So we make sure that everything is disinfected. Once a student has used it and somebody else comes in, we're going to disinfect it. Okay? So very, very proud of those measures. Next slide. Here you're also going to see a long list of what we've been doing all year. You know, and I shared some of that with the pictures in the beginning of this, the safety part. But what I wanted to tell you is, again, we continue to support our campuses and departments when requests are made for additional safety measures. Our teachers have been phenomenal in going to their principals and requesting certain safety and we provided for them. We have, we do not say no to what our needs are for our teachers and our students in the classrooms as well as the campus and departments. We continue to practice social distancing, which is very, very critical. And of course, you know, as students come in, if we have more, we have to make adjustments. And our campus principals have been, again, really going at it and making sure that our protocols and our adjustments are being made for the safety of our children through breakfast and as well as lunchtime. Next slide. You know, we talked, you know, I know you've seen the news and there's a lot of information out there about this vaccination. And the state has recently released a phase in schedule for COVID-19 vaccinations. You know, our board of trustees also approved a resolution at the December regular scheduled board meeting and requesting Governor Abbott to include public school personnel in the official expert vaccine allotment panels definition of frontline workers. But as of today, we have not heard if that's going to be the case. But we did also, just so you'll know, we emailed all our staff with this information because we had received some word from some of our principals that some of our staff members are asking about vaccination. So Ms. Alibad, again, went above and beyond and provided this information to us at Central Office and we forward that information to our staff. Something I also wanted to say to you is that, you know, during the holidays, I got a call from Cameron County and they were asking if our nurses wanted to go get the vaccine. And that was what an opportunity for our nurses, right? I went ahead and I called Ms. Alibad and I want to say within five minutes, you know, it was a turnaround. She was able to get five nurses to go to, to get the vaccine. And so very proud of her and getting her, her team to go and get vaccinated. And I was very, I was very appreciative because, you know, I, some of those nurses, they did email me and thank me. But I said, it's all of us and us is our district, you know, and providing those opportunities. And hopefully, you know, we can extend those opportunities with these vaccine clinics that we're hearing about because, again, we want to do whatever we can to make sure that we can ensure the safety as much as possible, again, for all of our staff. Next slide. The next slide, in the next portion, we're going to be talking about instruction and how it looks very different this year, La Feria ISD. Next slide. You know, our guiding principles here in La Feria is to ensure that our students have a high quality education. You know, that is stated in our vision and mission. And in addition to that, we continue to teach the TEACs, which are the state standards, and we continue to have those high expectations. You know, we've also provided device and connectivity for families who have stated there is a need. If those families still continue to have connectivity challenges, they are encouraged to report to face-to-face. In addition to that, the other option that has been provided for them are instructional packets. And our campuses have been, again, so, so wonderful in ensuring that having that process and procedures in providing, in providing those instructional packets because we know we're all different kinds of learners. And we have students that, yes, they can view it on the laptop, if you will, but some students need to have a hard copy. I'm one of them. I have to have that hard copy. And so again, you know, going above and beyond, in fact, we also deliver and pick up. And so again, our campuses and our teachers are coming up with different innovative ways to, to get the information now, but also to, to get it back because our teachers need to grade and of course, to see our kids attaining the TEACs. That is very, very critical. Now, another thing that I wanted to stress is that, you know, you can't compare what we're doing now to what we did in the springtime because we have daily teachers doing interaction through our Zoom and through Seesaw. So it's very, very different. And let me tell you, when I went to another classroom and I had seen that campus had received and ordered a different device for their teachers, you know, speaking to the teachers telling me how excited they are to have this new tool. And, you know, and I asked them, you know, how, how, you know, how has it been for you? You know, adjusting to the remote and in-person and, you know, and they told me, you know, Dr. Hernandez, it takes practice. And we've really become even, you know, a lot better at it. And that's what we do in life. We become better through practice. And so very proud of our staff with their enthusiasm and their commitment to do whatever it takes for our students because they have it so challenging, so challenging. You know, one of the things that I shared this morning with a, in the presentation was that, you think about it. We have an environment at home. We have no control of that environment. And our teachers have experienced so many types of incidents, if you will, because we don't control that environment. Then we have the campus environment and they have to have, to monitor those students as well. And so, you know, they're, they're, they're have to have both forms of educating in engagement. And they have gone out there and they have done and do whatever it takes for our students. And so very, very proud of them because it is challenging and we know it is. But just hearing from them, you know, how, you know, how thankful they are, how appreciative they are of all of us and their principals because the principals are right there with them. And so again, kudos to all of them. Now, another part of this is the, the social emotional. You know, we have students that are not adapting very well. We have adults not adapting very well because it's very, very different. And I'm very proud of our counseling department. You know, they work with our students, they work with our staff because this is new for all of us. And trying to get used to this new normal is very challenging and very hard. But let me tell you, we have the mindset, we have the motivation, we have the inspiration because here in La Feria, we put our students first. Our students come first. And everything that we do is for them because we want them to be successful. And I also want to state how we provide help desk for students, parents and staff. You know, we have our campuses working with our parents. We have our district level working with our parents, calling parents, having appointments. We're creating videos for our parents on social media, step by step. And so again, and that's not the end of it. We're going to continue making those adjustments. We're going to continue adding because we know, we know that it has to get down. We have to do what's best for our kids. Next slide. Again, I want to hit more on instruction. You know, as per the instruction, we provide our students. You know, again, they've been very diligent, you know, you know, our campuses are conducting visits, you know, speaking to teachers. Again, they can't thank us enough for what we have been doing, we continue to do. You know, as a district, we provide asynchronous and synchronous instruction to both face-to-face and remote learners simultaneously. You know, our teachers and staff, again, you know, are doing their very, very best. You know, so how do teachers monitor? You know, how they monitoring both the remote, right? And then the face-to-face. And so they are, they do it through class. They do it through checking of understanding, questioning within the Zoom session. You know, we also have checkpoints, unit tests. We also have, we administer benchmarks. We're still administering the benchmark. And that benchmark data will be presenting to our board. Our board is very, very good about wanting to know how we're doing and again, what is the plan of action? Because we do have a plan of action. You know, our campuses work very hard on that. And again, and just so you'll know, what is new this school year is that TA, which is the Texas Education Agency, they had stated already that the star end, of course, is not going to count for accountability. But we always use data to paint a picture, no matter what, to show us where we're at and what we need to do. And then we respond, we respond through interventions, right? And so again, I just want to share with you that we continue to have ongoing staff development. Our learning platforms for our pre-K, the second is Seesaw. And our learning platforms for our third grade to 12 is Google Classroom. Again, the classes are faced with providing interventions. They do within a school day. They provide it on Saturday. You know, I spoke to a couple of principals today. They're making more adjustments already, providing more opportunity for students to, to partake in the TEACs, you know, to make sure that they're attaining and they're learning. It's not a checklist. It's, you know, we want to make sure that they're learning and being successful. Next slide. Again, I want to stress our district supports. We're very fortunate that we are able to have district supports in our departments. We have our special ed department who always go above and beyond for especially their populations. We also have a bilingual who, who right now is very busy with TELPAS. We know that the learning, the second language acquisition is critical. Our migrant has been very, very, very diligent, having been parent meetings, have been doing staff development as well. We know the importance of college and career readiness. We know that not all students are going to go to college. And so we as a district have made a lot of opportunities for our two students to be certified. And let me just share with you, very excited because we have grants, we have grants that we have that it has really going to really make our programs even better, you know, on a health science and in construction. Because we know masonry, we talk about electricians, all these jobs are a high demand. And so we have to make sure that when our students graduate, that they have options. And so we're very proud of what we've been doing with our, with our parent technology education. Of course, we continue to service our gifted students with rigorous additional services, if you will, and as well as parental involvement. I cannot stress enough the importance of us welcoming our parents. You have done and keep working at it. We'll continue to do so. You know, Mrs. Prado, Ms. Veronica Torres at the district level, you know, always looking in ways in how we can continue providing the supports, but having involvement and engagement, you know, are, and I want to just stress, you know, Dr. Rodriguez at CNI with his department are constantly working and trying to find resource and supports for our campuses. And really just to think, this is teamwork. You know, nothing that we do is in isolation. It's all of us working together for the, for the future of our students. Next slide. You know, wow, you think about technology, really, we are fast forward into technology, the new way of learning. You know, and we know that it's really transformed during this pandemic. Our technology department continues to support staff and students and parents by offering help desk to troubleshoot technical problems with devices and hotspots to provide the support. You know, many conversations that Mrs. Torres and I have, Mrs. Torres and I have, we talked, we know, we always reflect at the beginning of the school year, how things went. And we're, we're very proud of all of our staff because really, we didn't have major issues. You know, our border proof, technology, Wi-Fi, you know, everything came in on time. We're able to have those devices in our students' hands and we're able to troubleshoot. I remember Mr. Flores telling me how he himself had a parent come like three times, three days in a row. And that's all part of this new learning platform and how we provide the support and very welcoming. You know, because that parent came every day and they did not waver. They continue to support him. So very, very proud of our staff again in what they are doing and they continue to do. Our next slide, please. Next here, you're going to see our picture of our, of our, our, our staff, our, you know, our, the child nutrition, these ladies, these gentlemen, you know, I can't say enough about them. You know, they have been unbelievable, spectacular. You know, I remember back when the pandemic just hit and everybody was sheltering place, they were still working. And there we are, Mrs. Tenditores and Dr. Rodriguez, even Mr. Aguilar, going to the different places, you know, to help out as much as possible. But let me tell you, they did not waver. They were there to feed our children, you know, because that is was very, very important, you know, for us here in La Feria ISD. And let me tell you, through our child nutrition department, you know, they provide meals for all children, 18 and younger. You know, the meals are provided for both face-to-face and remote as well as providing weekend meals. And, and again, what they did at the department during the holidays and Thanksgiving and Christmas, they provided meals for our students. Again, thank you, Mrs. Casas. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your staff, for their dedication and commitment to feeding our students since the beginning of this pandemic. Next slide. Here you're going to see a visual representation of many of our extracurricular. You know, here you're going to see the, we're going to share with you protocols for varsity sports to ensure safety as much as we possibly can. In addition to that, I want to stress to you that we also have our choir students competing at the district, regional and staff level via Zoom tryouts. Our high school UIL students are participating in virtual meets. You know, we continue to provide opportunities for our students because we know that's critical. Next slide. Here you're going to see many of the protocols and I'm going to speak to the athletics program right now. You know, if you go to the, to our webpage and go to the high school, you're going to see the athletic tab. And you're going to see there in all the sports, they have protocols and those protocols have been reviewed by us. And again, just to get feedback and they have been so proactive. You know, I can't say enough about our coach, our AD, Coach Salinas and Athletic Director, Coach Campos. You know, they are very vigilant and our successes are their successes. Their successes are ours, right? And let me tell you, they continue to provide screening and temperature checks for all students and staff. You know, at this point, you know, varsity sports are the only ones that we're competing in. At our junior high, they're doing within their class periods and because we know competitions is important. They need to continue during their class to provide those opportunities. In addition to that, our varsity athletic events, there are capacity limitation and admission is free. You know, all, all athletes have to wear masks at all times. They also have to bring their own water bottles. All participants in games are held after four o'clock. In addition to that, when we are competing out of town, our team travels together, of course, following CDC guidelines. But in addition to that, we have allowed this year, if they have the form and the parent or guardian wants to take them from there, that is fine. We allow that. Again, we're, we're not doing a lot of things that are normal during this time. In addition to that, all athletes are, they had to have completion of the COVID-19 questionnaire. Again, I can't stress it enough. Again, it's teamwork. I've heard of many of our neighboring schools who have to quarantine many teams, football, basketball, volleyball. And I just want to share a quick story, you know, when our girls made volleyball playoff. I was deeply moved. I was so excited to see how our coaches had, you know, really implemented the CDC guidelines there. They had chairs six feet apart. You know, our girls, our team wore masks throughout. I can't say that about the other team. Our coach, when she was with our team, right, the girls, they were all spread out. You know, I had goosebumps. I was so, so proud. You know, I made sure I let Coach Salinas know, our female Coach Campos know because I want them to know how proud we are because they're going above and beyond. Because we know that if we get a case, that's it. We're closing it down. And, and they know it's important for our children. Again, very, very proud of all that you're doing. Next slide, please. Next is our transportation. You know, Mr. Guerra and Mr. Robles, Mrs. Torres, that's our department. And let me tell you, they, they too have been working since the pandemic. And I can't thank you enough, Ms. Torres and Mr. Guerra and Mr. Robles. I know he's not here, but it takes team. And these individuals with their department, they, we have 17 buses. We have approximately about 30, 340 students that ride the bus. And let me tell you, they have implemented safety measures that to ensure as much as we possibly can, right? The safety protocols. In addition to that, we know that, you know, our, our students are coming, they're coming and we don't know the numbers. Right now, we don't know. I'm, I'm going to, to say that we're going to have less kids because the numbers are up. And so, but if they were higher, that they were coming in, I guarantee you, our transportation maintenance, they have it under control. You know, and at this time, I just want to, again, thank you. Thank you all for being so attentive during this presentation. You know, I just want to reiterate how proud we are, all of the La Feria ISD staff, for our board of trustees, our community, you know, for always going above and beyond in doing what is best for students. And I know, we all know that we have challenges, but we're, we're ready to face these challenges together. You know, we appreciate any, any suggestions that you might have that perhaps we didn't think of. You know, I'm always in constant communication with my colleagues, other superintendents in this region. And we're all facing very similar challenges, all of it. None of us has that magic bullet, have that, that, that book of tricks, if you will. And we're all facing very similar challenges. All of this, none of us has that magic bullet, have that, that, that book of, of tricks, if you will. But let me tell you, we share ideas. We work together because we are one region, one state, one nation. And so we know the value of education. And just know that we will continue to make changes and adjustments as we forge forward with this pandemic. And also be assured that La Feria ISD continues to be the district of choice. And we welcome all people who want to come to our district.